Y'all ready?
We're ready, man.
Alright, we'll call a meeting to order. This is a continued meeting, working on the budget. So, commission, this right here, I guess Lisa, what you're handing us and what's been copied is the latest
Yes.
Report, right?
That was after our, any minute we change on Tuesday.
Okay.
It's the latest copy.
Alright, um, do y'all want to start at a certain page? Is there somebody that wants to start at, ask a question?
What, uh, what is our estimated carryover?
The estimated carryover is right at seven million. It's six million, nine fifteen, six sixty.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is, what do you think this year's carryover is gonna be? The twenty-two budget carryover?
Six million, four forty-two, one seventy-four, twenty-five. Is that not what you're asking? This is the estimated.
Hey, you give us a total, yeah, I just, I got that. But, there's gonna be a carryover for this fiscal year that's gonna add.
It will be, it will not be adding extra carryover.
There will, there will be a carryover. But at least, but you're not gonna know until-
It's just gonna be an estimate, that's what I'm asking.
Right, right.
Like, on our budget of twenty-twenty-two, there was an estimated reserve of four million, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. That was our last year of budget, that's what it was.
That was every plan we had, that's not what I'm asking.
What's gonna happen is, let me, we put it in terms, every, not everybody, everybody will say in their budget, and there will be some things left over that will carry back over.
They can be included in the twenty-three budget.
And I don't know if you've had a chance to estimate those, what you think, by looking at, you can kinda guess by looking at everybody's budget. Last year, um, everybody's usually under budget, but there's always something to carry over.
You got your, you got it added together.
Which, you don't have a, you know? It's not even anybody's. What you estimating for this year's carryover?
It is not worth it. Otherwise, she would have to, there's no way.
Okay, let me ask it a different way. Is last year's carryover, this year's that we're gonna carry over, excuse me, added to the projected revenues, gonna balance our budget? Or are we gonna have to go into funds from the year before and pass to balance the budget?
What he's saying is, like, say for instance, our budget was a million dollars. Well then we carry, and so, how much, so let's just say you had two hundred fifty thousand dollars that was not used. So that should carry over, that's the money we're looking for, not how much the whole kind of-
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, you know?
But we ain't carrying four million dollars over from last year's budget, that's from all the budgets in the past.
Yeah.
See, we're gonna have a shortfall, you told us five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars was the estimate. Okay, are we gonna have a carryover of five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars or more from the twenty-two budget in your estimate? I mean, I know it's not exact.
Okay.
Or are we gonna have to go back and save some money?
I would have to get back there and add each one up to see what that number is, because even on these numbers that are right here, and if you look at individual funds, they still about carry over from the year before. I would actually have to look at my anticipated revenues spreadsheet that I have and get those numbers added.
A couple of years we, we get into it, uh, in twenty-twenty, we actually gained. You know, we end up gaining larger money.
Well, you know, about, totally.
Yeah, we had, we gained money. But what about twenty-two? According to what we had scheduled for twenty-two, we, we still had a gain.
I was trying to find where it's not, it's just a budget that each carryover at the end of the year.
Yeah, I know it, it-
It was hard to divide it that way.
I said what you're saying, you're just trying to see the, what's left from this year. And one way you can tell is if you look at this bottom number, this estimated reserve at the end of the year, if you look at that number compared to what was in FQ twenty-two, and it went up, then that means you had more left over in carryover.
Carryover to a million dollars left over. I mean, those are very high numbers.
And this number is higher than it was at the end of the estimated reserve of the year end, and it went up. That means you had enough in carryover to cover your deficit, the shortfall here.
Here's one thing.
Next year's gonna be terrible. I mean, we're in a recession, it's only gonna get worse. That's my opinion, and opinion that we've got to people, it's those money. So, whatever we pass this year, it's probably gonna end up not being enough. So we probably might go back next year and amend the budget. So I was just wondering if we get, if it's a twenty-two budget carryover is gonna fix the twenty-three budget shortfall, and we're not going into way two, three years ago money, is what I'm trying to get at.
I understand what you're asking.
What I did, I went back and, you got all of your budgets.
That's right here. I mean, it's almost two million dollars right here, but that's not telling me the question I'm asking.
Yeah, but because number in the past, they've split it off for us. We just had it going there, kinda figure it.
It's just a guess, I mean, you know, cause we still got a couple of months, well.
I'm just thinking that the estimated reserve, you know, how you showed that's about two million or more, that means that you took all of your estimated revenues from the previous year, added what you had left over, and subtracted all that through. You showed that we had an increase, that means that we did not dip into money from previous years. We actually amended for our reserve. It's the, it's the same thing, but you're just asking for it in just a burnout.
Okay, so you're saying that the almost two million dollars is gonna be the carryover?
Yes. It's either gonna be in the form of the fact that we had less revenue predicted than we actually got, which is the case, I know that's the case, for some of it. And also did not spend as much as what was actually budgeted, some of those budgets. But you do have to think about whether some of those carryovers for some of the departments, like the engineers department, the shared department, they can get that money back.
The key.
In their budget, they basically get to keep it. So that number would be in that estimated reserve right there.
Yeah, that's the difference. Stayed, but they're taking it back.
Right. But basically, yes, if we've got an increase in that estimated reserve from one year to the next, that means that we did cover all of our expenses, estimated, before it's up to this day.
Unfortunately, the last year, we've gotten. We have in the past, uh-
Well, we can, we ain't gonna keep, we ain't gonna keep jamming regardless, I'm telling you. We're starting to spend the money a lot. I mean, uh, we've added a debt at courthouse, we've added another cleaning person, uh-
Three hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's what I'm trying to get at.
But all of that, yeah, but all of that is included in this budget. Those, those additional employees that raised, everything's included in here. And this is what your estimated reserve at the end of the year you were expecting with the highest.
With one caveat, and it's just because I just found out yesterday, cause it just got rolling on this week. I didn't know that the insurance board has already, they're gonna go up six point, six point four percent on everything insurance. Awesome. That makes about forty-six thousand dollar difference. So if you count a hundred employees, we're right at that, it's right in there.
And we're getting a four increase.
Now, in the past, they have not included, when they know that there's insurance, like the budget for last year, they didn't anticipate the expense. And I guess they didn't know that what was in the budget was probably enough to cover that. But there is a six point four percent. I've heard that from two people that are actually on that LTHI board, so.
Well, what, or what, what kind of hospital was the biggest one?
It was like forty-something, and that's if you count, but now that also is if you count it for the whole twelve months, and really, I can only count it for ten months, cause that will kick in till like November or December. So, we're still talking about forty-ish. It's not crazy money, but I didn't want you to believe it, and it has to be cause of how much we changed.
But it's getting to crazy money because, I mean, I mean, we, we still like dealing with these debt, these for the schools and all that, so it's, uh, it's gonna get to the point where any money is crazy money. Cause we can't, we don't want the needle to get back over here, we want, please keep the needle one percent on the good side.
See, that makes, it makes it hard to budget for an increase like that. We don't know what that number is until I found out this week, they just were on it on Tuesday. But they did say that next year they're planning, because they had too much, so much backlash about waiting till last second, trying to make a decision, they're planning on it in August.
That's what I was trying to find out, that we want to keep, we want more out here and keep digging, because that was already keep pulling and pulling and pulling, until we're right about that.
That's shit on.
And that's what-
And that's why I always-
That's what I'm trying to get at.
There's nowhere. Maybe it's from this way.
You think you got two million dollars from that last year?
Why?
I said two million, you're gonna have two million more dollars than twenty-three that we had this year?
Just suppose it's that, you won't know with that one.
I didn't have a water, but this one though.
What did, uh, what did you decide about workers' compensation? Are you gonna put it all in here, or?
I don't know how to figure that, honestly, um-
You still have to fit it the whole way.
I just left it like it was, you know, we had taken a couple of them down, but I really don't know what to do about that. I know we don't wanna get a discount, and we didn't get a refund. I just don't know how to figure what we get.
I think they just based it on the past, she's just based it on what she got, you know, for that year. For that year, what she got this year, and she based it, um, and you go back and rule it, but I think that she's based it on land and land.
So we haven't got anything back yet this year. I know you said that-
That's what you get back, that was your, and that's what I always gave her, was that, what she could estimate for the, um, rates.
Alright, and I guess I kinda missed out on that part of it, but I wanted to talk to you about it and make sure I knew what I was given before I went taking something out, because it's got your summary of your total change in premiums and your net change in costs. So I was a little bit confused about what portion of that we actually get back. Just wanted to try and make an adjustment to it.
Well, do you want to, do you wanna go back and put what we took out back in? Or do you wanna go through and change it all?
You left it in.
I left it. Well, no, those two, those two we changed, but the ones that were ready to change, I didn't want it.
Do we need to, like, and add that back in then?
Let's leave that out, I'll adjust the others. I don't want the budget to look any worse than it already does, so I can adjust the other. I just need to make sure I understand that on this letter that Laura sent me a copy of, that I know which number that I'm adjusting for. Does that make sense? And, and I've never seen one of these forms before, so I've never-
So we just got the one that, that this year we got that.
Okay.
So, this-
This one, this one, the one here? So it's this number right here?
I'll confirm that, I don't think it was that number, cause you said we just wrote that number, it's all we did use.
We used this and this, and so they, these weren't left over ever, so it's this number. So I'm saying, I just didn't know where-
Yeah, we only used this one.
Okay, I got you.
That's just the change in the cost.
Okay. Well, now that I know, I'm gonna handle it.
Okay, so my question still is, are you gonna, do you look like and adjust all of them, or you just wanna add these to the?
I'd rather adjust all of them. I know it's more trouble, but it's not, you know, I don't want any of those budgets to go overplanted because of workers' costs that we don't have, so I'll adjust them.
You should, I would have thought you would already, you already saved in the check.
I have not received it.
But I'll just call and confirm that out.
I'll set all the checks when they come in, I post those. And I'm kinda watching out for it, since she sent that letter.
You said that it would be, but in the end, you would get the checks back, when they started changing it. Watch your answers.
I was the one that got it when I was out, but I could ask for that. Did you know those two guys?
We're good on page one.
Page number two, again.
No.
Not there yet.
The sign, just, um, I was careful.
There's one I got right there, that's page seven, this is page one.
On the budget she handed you today?
No, this is one she handed you today.
Is it page one?
Yep.
That's one, yeah.
From revenue analysis.
From revenue analysis, were you like, yes.
Uh, that's page one of mine, that's page one of mine, there. So down here, y'all just found it on him, but?
Yeah, it is on one, but last week's was on seven.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just gonna stick with one.
Last, when I was at last week, I just don't think that was.
Yeah, that's one, which are all the changes, they were talking about that change, but I didn't remember mine either.
So what page do y'all want to start on the?
Well, if we start on the new, I'm gonna start on the one, which we've got today. Now, everybody can reference back to what they, their notes, but we're gonna stay on this here one that she handed us today.
Yeah, but I just wanna know where y'all want to start.
Well, which one have you got? You got your old one, or you got your new one?
I got the new one.
Okay, well, that'd be my one.
Cause I don't want y'all making changes. And I think Lisa's got any changes on them, right?
Yeah, Lisa's got, yeah. But nothing both.
But starting off, the revenue analysis is page one, or you can go to the budget analysis on page one.
Budget analysis. Cause none of that's changed.
Alright.
Okay, we're on that page one, right?
On budget analysis.
Right, okay.
Is there any changes there, y'all wanna see happening?
I think, I think we got the changes in.
Okay, on the health insurance on one twenty-two, you already got that moved up, but you're, that six percent, you was just talking about the other than that, right?
I added anything to that six percent, I found out about it yesterday afternoon.
So health insurance, one from sixty-two hundred to nineteen thousand?
Health insurance.
The, the health insurance?
One twenty-two, one hundred. Three fold interest.
I'm trying to see what the difference is here, because flex went down, which means that somebody that was on flex before is now, physician that was on flex before is now on health insurance. That being included. That doesn't, somebody could be that many people, though, that's a pretty big, the increase.
Becoming flex, it went from sixteen thousand to almost twelve thousand lanes. Well, four thousand lanes.
See how many people that that would have been. Shouldn't be that many people, though. I'll be looking over that, and we could grab the salary budget worksheet for that, and see if something's wrong.
I see anything else standing there?
I'm looking.
So, I said job two, almost two thousand, you thought that, yeah? I was only wanting that to make you look.
That's a good, see, that's two more, almost twenty.
Twenty.
That's above. And what am I talking about? Four people?
Well, uh, the M, I don't like the M, I think the M was on flex, wasn't it?
I don't know.
But, uh, what about Emily?
Yeah, Emily does the flex.
So, if everybody's on flex, it shouldn't be, it should, if it is, it should be less. See what I'm saying?
I'm on the health insurance.
You're on the health insurance? So that means, uh, is, so, is Emily on flex, or she on?
Yeah. Well, you're talking about Emily, yeah, she's on flex.
Cause she had it.
Cause, yeah, so. It has like the daycare claims.
Yeah. And then, uh, she has to have insurance.
But, the other had insurance, so you just-
I don't know if you had it or not. Now there's a blow-off mess up right there, around nineteen thousand.
To tell this, there was only one person that was on flex, I mean, on the health insurance last time, and now there's three. And if you do three thousand times sixty-six hundred dollars, it's right about where you're at for this year.
So you got three people on it now, that's in this one?
Yes.
So, we, uh, so-
Who was one?
Crystal, Emily, and you.
We're all on health insurance, except for Emily Brown.
Right.
I know Emily Brown, Emily's the one.
Okay, there it is there.
So that was the big increase, but it just went.
It doesn't look like it was.
It reversed.
But the ministers also have their insurance in ministry too? So I'm on the insurance.
Well, she's gonna say, but see, you look, flex benefit went down.
Any of y'all got health insurance from the territory? So that's, that's me, I'm, I got it.
Well, I guess what looks so bad is, if that one went up, then flex didn't go down, but-
It is.
I'll double check on this, but I have gone backwards to the forums and sent it around all these salary budgets.
But I'm the flex. There's a little bit bigger.
So we added employees in that.
I don't know, I don't know. Get those straight in too.
And Jesse, but they added.
Oh, Jesse, John, uh, three.
Twenty-seven thousand last year, and it's only twenty-four thousand this year, so I get that way to the down.
And some of our, some of our office peers also pay for other departments, a few of them are, but this is just what's in fifty-one, one, zero, zero.
Uh, like, uh, there's also a budget, if you look over in the budget from the road department, cause some of that salary and insurance comes out of his budget for some of your workers up here.
Yeah, and, uh, it's, it's, that's counted for.
So how much we got coming out of insurance over that? Is it, who's insurance would be coming out of that? Mine? So y'all got flex benefits, don't you?
I don't have any.
You have to have flex, don't you?
You don't need your flex?
You get it.
I take the money.
You put it, send it over to top.
But you put your money, you got that.
That's still a flex, so I mean, it's still a flex plan, cause you match it, or you just get it.
Yeah, that's what I did, I did.
Right, I did the flex, my wife has good insurance.
I'm good with that, I think.
We're good?
Yep.
What about number two? I think we did that one square, it's pretty much basic. Three?
Might work cut that one in half.
The only thing he's got asked for is his office work, so, we'll correspond with that when we do our-
Did you ever, he was asking about that sixteen thousand dollars is in both of his budget or just his budget? About, ain't that about the same?
No.
But whatever we do in there, it's what we use.
But back up, and under, we were trying to figure out the telephone service. Did you find out, like the circuit clerk, remember it was such a high increase? Where the, uh, waters, you know, his, uh, telephone service, you know, it doubled.
I think that, from what I could see, when I would have looked, is that it had actually been creeping up, and there had not been enough in that budget for that, but just what was left with the rest of the budget was actually kinda covering it, and it was, it was going over the budget.
Okay, you just said.
Mm-hmm, it just had not been adjusted.
Did he give us, uh, gigabyte up there, for the, for that? Have y'all been able to sign a budget?
We have, I have, just. Mine's, mine works fine, I, you know, I mean, I-
That's good.
Except every once in a while, when I'm gonna go out.
Y'all good with your budgets, buddy? Elections, you know, we get hyper that money back, right?
I explained to Lisa, and she, um, Shane, we went back and looked at the, you gotta temper budget as far as when you have general elections versus when you have primary runoff. So it's a little bit cheaper for general.
And as far as filing, getting that, getting that money back, we just got some of the invoices for some of that from your office this week, so we're actually okay, and also got a letter standing that we had, I think November the fourth is the deadline. Do everything filed, so I actually have a form now.
Is that for the primaries, though?
That's, that's for everything so far.
Okay. Cause it, you'll have general election, you can get half of that too?
When will that be, though?
The general election be, why, I don't remember.
Third.
That'll be for next year.
First Tuesday after the first Monday and Thursday.
Okay, going on past, we're going on number six. I'll get into the election business. Sheriff's office.
I didn't know, I was like, what page, you know, I'm on eight.
On the new one, number six.
He was trying to skip out for something, he trying to get them by.
He's trying to skip that to make it.
Oh, it remained his budget?
We like, that's long, that's long.
Oh, let's back up!
Y'all got any questions about? Edith, y'all gonna approve the new one more, right?
It's in there.
He's gonna give him a new one more.
Were you out there now?
Yeah, she wasn't here. Only man Terry was here.
She's got a cat, an air conditioner, and a cigarette.
And a ashtray.
Ashtray.
Cup holder.
I think we were putting an ashtray and a cup holder on there, I think we're gonna get all of the grass cut. Maybe we get one of them little things that hold a cigarette like this in front of it, he can just chase it.
That's big.
Well, let me tell you, it takes, if you, the jail, you know, we got all the lock sticks made for yesterday, so we got the lock sticks. And then, uh, they were talking about those doors, and I've worked on about the doors all my life. I mean, we built them and made them, so we got the door sticks yesterday, but we had a door specialist there yesterday, and I'm like, this, you know, he's got the little tool kit, and so we tightened doors up, and doors started shutting, and, uh, but, uh, I'm gonna meet with the sheriff, uh, when we meet with him in about a week or two. We can't let it get that far behind. And I don't know what the protocol is, but when they fill out a sheet, they just put on our toilet stopped up. But I told Fred, well, the toilet's been stopped up two months. And, uh, and they just shut, you know, cause they got extra pods, they, there's plenty of room, they just shut it, just move into another one, but the thing about it, when you leave stuff like that, makes it a bad day, so. We spent two solid weeks working in the jail getting stuff fixed, so. They need to come up with something that creates a time and a date that is broken.
More detail.
Yeah, more detail. So I'll get with our new sheriff, and we'll get this worked out, or they can just start calling Kelly to come fix it. I told Fred, I'm like, I don't think I can wait that long. So we're approving that number eight, moving on. I'm on eight.
He's on eight now, cause he's fine, cause his maintenance is on track.
Well, I'm on the sheriff's, that's number six.
Is it number six, mine says? Well, they're the rest of.
You skipped the maintenance too.
Well, we done.
I don't have one.
We done moved on.
Now, we're on six.
Just don't leave it hanging, go on.
The one we got on, that's a great thing, get it in. Uh, the only thing I got on the sheriff's is, is a question. He's owing forty thousand dollars for a vehicle that John says he can't get it. Can he take that forty thousand dollars and do something else for it?
No.
It's a more of a vehicle.
We're talking about the sheriff. It's my understanding that the sheriff, anything other than salaries, can do whatever he wants.
Unless it's price, unless you put something that you want to say on it.
If you don't like it for just a vehicle, that's all it means, not a bread.
You gotta do a separate resolution.
What would he use it for? And he got it out of.
Hey, listen. I'm sure you all know this, he's had an opening out there for the last two years, so he's using that opening for overtime. And money's getting spent, so we have no control over what he does, other than that number right there.
So he could have.
So if he can't, if he can't buy one, when it gets to the point where he can buy one,
Will come back.
Just go ahead and come back and.
So it's good to win.
Forty, forty thousand.
Take it out.
And y'all away you go, you know?
Yeah.
Other than that, John said, they didn't want anything to come out.
Well, Emily is bad on going right now. She's got four of her out there in the laundry, she's something to deal with. Something's gotta give up, well, we're not need to get the attorneys involved. I mean, boring boss. Because now it's done breaking out into other. Well, we, well, we post, well, we post a job, we should have on there what we're gonna pay. And then, if, if, if there's something on there, if they come in with a certain kind of training or certificate, it should also post that. Cause you can't go in there and sit down and sign this name, when it should be the HR signing it there on a piece of paper. Uh, but I was telling you, we got a problem that we're gonna have to get straightened out.
I think it's more misunderstanding at this point, but.
I don't think it's misunderstanding, it's time to kind of take advantage of the situation, so.
But you can't, I mean, you, you have a set job descriptions, and you, you have to.
And we posted what it is.
You post, you can't pay, you can't pay, you can't afford dollars more than what his job description says, period.
So y'all taking out mobile over there, forty thousand, y'all will possibly let him have that when he find he can get that.
Will come in, will come to a special league?
Mm-hmm, but if you want to, it says, he comes out. But y'all just do, is that precaution, people don't use it for something else? That was my question, and I might be wrong, but what I've been told is, other than salaries and benefits, all this other line down here.
Look at me, look at me, look at me, let me, let me say this.
Okay.
Let me say this, just say this. You know, we know it's for a motor vehicle, right? Well, then which one of us is gonna sit down and say, well, we're gonna give you another forty thousand dollars for a, for that vehicle? You think he's gonna call and say, okay, I spent this money on, uh, looking for a best or whatever he might have spent it for, that's the one we put forty thousand, or he's gonna come and ask us for another forty for a vehicle, well, guess what? He better get that horse out of pasture, cause I'm not gonna be beating him up there to give him another car.
You know what we've been dealing with this sheriff's office the last two months?
Oh, it ain't, it ain't nice, and I tell you, hopefully, we can get it worked out, we only got one sheriff.
The position that's not, that's not filled, maybe, maybe we need to have a sheriff in here for us to have a discussion and say, well.
Well, he just filled it.
You don't need to be used.
Yeah, he just filled it, the problem is, the way he filled it, it's messed up too.
He, he hired, just did a HR hire, like, the other day, right?
And he said for salary, take it out, go to page seven. Seven.
I didn't have any, like, on that other one.
You have that question?
The laptop, obviously.
The M is two, I don't know, that's.
Okay, we changed, uh, what did we change, the train from three thousand to two thousand, that was only issue we had.
Moving on.
I'm good.
Number nine?
Yep. Any changes there?
I just wanna make a note on this. I went over and got, uh, letters out of the, for the transportation thing. And I've been moving people around to the doctor's office and stuff in my area. And, uh, and I think, has he ordered a new phone yet? Just, uh.
I haven't heard of yours.
Well, it has to come from here, right?
Can you say, have you had a phone? Then he has not.
Okay. But I got, both are having to print it out, and I went and started handing them out to some of our senior areas in the county, in my district, but, uh, and so I go on over there, and from my understanding is, is the phone don't work, or it's broke or whatever, but, but all these people.
You're talking about the transportation?
Yeah.
When I talked, we was up here at the corner, so now we jump down here to transportation. Okay. First of all, he has, he has two phones.
Well, I got the, I had brochures, I went over and I printed them off over line. And, uh, there's three ladies over here in one area that's calling, and, uh.
But he's got two, two cell phones on a laptop.
And a laptop, because I.
Well, then they need to put all the numbers on the sheet then.
Well, my thing is.
The numbers that don't work.
Well, I was asking Lee, why he has that, that third phone he's supposed to be for that person, that substitute person? But we don't ever use that substitute person, so why are we paying for a phone? You know, that never gets really used.
Well, there's people wanting to ride the bus, and, and.
And you're saying the phone's broke?
Well, that's what they told me, I went up there, cause I didn't, you know, I didn't, cause I called myself, and then I give the lady, I, I posted the paper on the, in the laundry room at all three, uh, apartments. And so, and then I get papers to the ladies that managed.
Is it a county phone, or is it, he just gets reimbursed?
It's county.
It's county phone.
The, the laptop and the two phones.
But, but, uh, what's her name, uh, Jeanie? She said that Melinda had ordered him a new phone, and I said, well, that's gotta come through the county commission, I mean.
I don't think, I don't think it cost anything to get it replaced, but, but the thing is, they should did a rush order or something, or drove it off, or got one, or.
Well, you got people sitting in the parking lot at the store trying to call him.
But, but what I don't understand, you have this extra phone over here. Why is that number not used?
Well, you ought to say, yours, I said, ought to have a phone.
Well, those phones should have the same number.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, he, he's using it as for his backup person, isn't it?
I hope he, well, he didn't get the email that Ashley sent out about last month's riders.
Yeah.
Yeah, he didn't tell us in the meeting, and I forgot about it, but he sent us an email. If we keep, keep getting emails like that, you're gonna strike that whole budget next to your foreign number.
That's where I'm at.
Because it, it, last month, he didn't have a rider, had three or four. So he, you know, he ain't worth a hundred and five thousand dollars for a full rider a month.
Okay, we're moving on to number ten.
Okay. I think we're getting off soon, but we didn't talk pretty quick.
Is there, is there a casual missing here on nine? What was I looking at? What was added? Never mind, we'll hit.
Everybody good?
Do that.
Well, I got a question more on.
Environmental.
On environmental salaries, cause they went down.
They did, and we double checked those numbers, and it is correct, and last year, the numbers that were on the salary budget were not near this high, they only have one employee on there, that was twenty-some thousand dollars, that was all.
I thought we had two employees, what about the lady?
There was a part, there was a part number, there was somebody that was twenty-something thousand, budget for twenty-something, and then one was like seven thousand.
Okay, what we got?
Now we've got two full, common forties.
Okay.
And it's less than it was last year, it was, something was wrong last year, something else was added in, I don't know if it was a mistake, I don't know what happened with it. But I, I had double tripped and checked those numbers, and these are exactly what we, what it should be.
Okay, I just have a question more.
And that makes sense, and I had, I have questions on it too, but I, we'll go back and double check it.
So that's two employees, so the insurance for two employees is thirteen, right, I mean, you know, six thousand, six thousand something, yeah, so that's.
Just the numbers are wrong? Twenty-two, twenty-three?
This, I'm just playing, last year's.
Is it not? I'll double check that for you.
Okay.
Okay, we're on eleven?
Yeah, we're on eleven, and then last year, we're going back to that, uh, gas fund, is it the bottom?
Flex benefits.
Mm-hmm, yeah, this is sort of give a little idea of how much, but this here's what comes from our gas fund, if I end up here correct, the hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Well, how come we got? Flex benefits on this one, and then on the other one.
Well, this here is probably for you and Mark, or whoever, whoever, whichever commissioners gets, uh, some of this is paid for, but it furnishes also the commissioners and some of the people in this office.
I understand that, but that's almost the same as what was over here, right? Thirteen thousand? Eleven, seven, and this is thirteen eight. See, that one went down, the one for the county administrator on very first page. Went down, and this one went up about the same amount, that went down. I know there's something I'm missing on this, but.
That makes it look like somebody changed from health insurance to flex.
Well, that would've been. I mean, I've never had a health insurance, you've never had a health insurance, you, you did have a health insurance, and you just taking it, haven't you?
No, I paid for about a year.
Cause see, I've got to go up there, what, twenty years, the health insurance didn't change, but two hundred dollars, and then the flex changed almost four thousand. Well, there's something about it, I just don't understand, I'm not able.
Oh, but that shouldn't change, that, I mean, because that would've been, uh.
Well, I know I'm not getting flex benefits anymore. Cause I still got like two or three thousand dollars, it takes forever to get rid of that flex, cause that's there.
The gasoline, it's just.
A what? A mess.
That doesn't make sense.
Well, if you got insurance somewhere else.
It's now.
It's flex, so you.
Well, I did, but even then, I mean, I, you know, I was told that I could buy my granddaughter.
That's not ours, I would've been there. Scootin', or denting?
Dental, dental, I mean. So I never would use it for the first four years of my life, I never used it, so it's gonna be up to about ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I come up here, got my granddaughter, knew she was gonna have braces, and I come up here with my aunt, and I said, well, does she live? I said, well, no. I said, it's the doctors that I do.
You're not taking it, it's getting misplaced.
And we had, we had.
So then I was stuck at a big number, so then, I just been, it took this long to get it down to three or four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I did. See, I was saying, I started taking a check, I wasn't, I never better mind, or something. Are you on flex, Tyler? What's she doing?
Are you on flex benefits yet, Tyler?
But he would've been on flex this year too.
Last year.
Twenty-two, so.
I don't know, like I said, I was, like, gotta be something I'm missing on it, cause if it went, I mean, that's people presenting interest.
So that don't make sense, because nobody's.
Everybody's the same, so.
And.
But is, is she four then? It's not on that board. Yeah, since that's four.
That fifty-three one, that account, also does a portion of our office too.
Yeah.
It's one of the ones.
It's tied, that's what I'm saying, it's tied, it's tied in, I think it's to the clerk, and.
Okay, so we should add.
It's tied in the first.
Because some of it's split, and some of y'all is split on.
You know, he also kept that.
That's why.
So going back to page one, that and this both needs to be added together for the commissioners and the administrative.
I still.
Clear out on it, it's a total, it's not just, but there's other departments that pay for some of this also. Some of this office.
Yeah, like the nursing home, don't they pay a percent?
Well, they pay part of our insurance, but it's just their part of the insurance, but I'm saying, our office here is split between several departments. A couple of the employees are split, HR, and I think the clerk, maybe Emily Williams's position, are split between admin, gas, I think either it's EMA and something else, there's four, they're split between.
That guy's in this, it's probably about twenty percent, they use one of those.
Okay, then, because it's a swap around, and insurance went up, then that's gonna make this difference.
Wait, you said that, you're, yeah, cause HR, HR, cause, uh, you have to take, uh, nine-one-one, call.
It's split.
Right, okay.
All split.
So there's, there's gonna be a difference in that.
No, but, well.
Overall, if you take, if you take your health insurance off this time, you guys expect point four percent, that should be exactly what it should be different, no?
Are we all, maybe twelve, are we, y'all got any more questions on eleven?
There were two items that y'all changed on that point the last time, it was twenty, on two different places, and that's been adjusted.
One sixty-nine.
That's the forty thousand, total forty thousand now.
You took out one sixty-nine, you took out two oh four, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So is the gasoline tax now, are we in full swing with that, we're getting all that now, or is there still another?
I think it's about.
I think it's topped out.
It's not, yeah.
Okay. I think, what is it, every five years, they look at it or something, or three years, or five years, but it's topped out. I think now, with what was originally passed. All right, I got another, and I don't have any more, but anticipated revenue for FY twenty-three, one million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents.
That's what I have.
I got that written down here.
Oh, is it on?
That was the estimated revenue for, that was your seven cent gas tax. That's what I had anticipated on that, but that's just your seven percent, I think it had to, I had to double check that, uh, yeah, I think that was everything, if it was anything, that was expected to come in for that fund.
So.
But you know that triple R, they do the transfers because of the equipment, first of all, that triple R, some of that gets moved there for some one-eleven.
Have we got the gasoline tax yet, or we get it this month?
We get, the gasoline tax.
Or what we passed last month on the projects for next year. I was thinking we gotta check this month, or did you got, crocked it, got something? Are you, are you talking about when she was out? You're not talking about that.
The gasoline tax comes in every month.
It just goes in during, yeah.
Not the, not what got passed through legislature, that don't come in every month, that comes in one time a year, huh?
I'm not sure about that, I have to say now.
You're talking about.
They got a brain, yeah.
You, you're talking about the, the gas tax.
Mm-hmm, the gas, the increase in the gas tax that got passed, I thought we got that in a month's on, in September, we don't?
No, I thought it comes in monthly.
I thought it was portionized, and then I would've.
It's the same amount every year?
Yeah.
I mean, okay, uh. Okay, engineers, hundred sixty thousand of his is pay increase. And it went up three hundred thousand. I'm good. Now, the adjustments, shall we add the.
Now, the adjustment, shall we add the days that reflect, that you took out of?
Yeah, it's, at least she took.
Yeah, it is.
And she took out Jocelyn's office.
But she took forty thousand out of that.
They just corrected it.
Yeah.
For the area, but they're not doing it.
This is, yeah, and the new one reflects that.
So we're on fifteen. Well, I, I'm, I'm sort of going through this thing. Go back on thirteen.
Only thing I've got written down there is, please, my cousin money fixed her money to broker.
Thirteen, gone. He mentioned the motor grader, Terry, but we don't want to put it, but five hundred grand, you know, he's a good.
He said, he's right now, we got a little over two hundred thousand in that one thirteen account to pay for those motor graders, but they're very close to five hundred thousand. So from what, what I understand is it's just, he, he, when he gets ready to pay for something like that, he has been allowed to work for his earnings, and take it back through from the second account as he gets that money.
So I guess that's number fourteen now? And we went on this with Jocelyn, so that's correct, correct? He wasn't here.
And the difference is it's taken out.
Yeah.
The flowers.
Well. That was forty-six thousand, and the difference at the bottom is only.
Yeah, but she had to add, cause she's in that class now, and she's got girl two, and she added two or three thousand dollars.
She added five thousand referring to her two. I'm good.
Okay, what's her salary at now? Did we change that back?
Yes, I did.
Okay. We got that.
That's all much good thing. So I did correct, one twenty-two, it's back to her same budget that she had last year, other than the insurance that had increased from last year to this year. And of course, now we know it's one of the other six point four percent, but that's across the board, what we've got budgeted is the number that we're paying right now for insurance.
You got your pay from, requesting for.
I got it.
Twenty-one, on a lock on, two of, a pair of revenue and a board vacation.
Yeah, get that more.
Okay. Sixteen, okay?
Sixteen-five.
Yeah.
Sixteen, okay?
We only just took out the car.
Mm-hmm.
That's where this pass a resolution, and she didn't use her.
Okay.
That's reflected, right?
Yes, sir. Page one.
Well, ain't nothing to do but change the business.
That's right.
All these numbers just get changed automatically as we change these budgetary expenses.
All right.
I have to reflect them here.
Everybody happy?
No, I'm not happy. What is, what is?
What did take Mike and I?
Uh, you ain't got a big enough steak.
I mean, I'll put it this way, if this, if this deal was like, if I had three chickens, uh, he had to.
We, we have to talk about that. What about the note page? We'll go with the note page. You don't have a note page? You have a note page in here?
It's the same note page, we haven't changed one down.
Okay. Let's go with the note page, we'll get the same pass, cause I got wing here calling my name.
All right, so let's wait this, wait, let's talk about this, this, this work session's under continued from Monday. We'll have to close this and open up the next continuing that we can plan for the pass the budget, and that was on Tuesday. But as of right now, there's been, there's a forty thousand difference.
We don't have a kind of version yet, it's gonna be four, oh, we gonna pass, so she hasn't done that one yet.
So when?
I'll do four today, which will be a couple corrections and things that you want me to check into, the workers' comp would be the main thing, but other things are just, you know, just here and there, those things.
Because you're, you're, are you paying on to the increase that the six to ten, any of that?
No, because then it will be for the whole year.
It's only gonna be for ten months. And it's been, it's not been done before, but if you won't take all the money.
No.
It's not in the thick now, I wouldn't.
That's why I didn't go back yesterday, I didn't, I literally did not find out yesterday, I couldn't, because the, the VHS, I would've just figured it out this week, so. I took it out, but if you don't do it to us, it's fine, and we know it's gonna be a lot of. I think I have a, just sort of a tentative resolution right now for Crystal's vehicle, if you guys are interested in that at all, or we, I don't know, how you gonna handle that?
For the next work session.
We can only do the budget, which means you can't pass it.
Well, we didn't plan to really, that's my problem, but.
Yeah, but we're gonna carry it over for one resolution, then.
Fast debate.
Yeah, so we can't, we have to make.
All right.
Just looking at your notes, did they have a question about the notes?
Actually, it's a child, that's the, for it's good.
Forget it, man.
For the only one about a note, is that, which is totally so.
All right, so.
In that case, we'll have to call them on the meeting.
Another meeting for the board?
She said Crystal found a vehicle someone to drive.
Well, she will buy it when we give her the authority to buy it, and that will be in the next work session at the Navy Commission meeting. I'm sure she will be able to drive the silver car one more month. Still.
But now, is that gonna be an immediate bet?
It happens, no, it's gonna come out first, it's gonna come out of her reserve, she's got the money.
She's setting on, she's setting on a quarter thousand dollars back there, that's not even in the budget.
Okay.
And she's gonna spend part of that money, which I think she's spending a lot, but that's just.
Okay, all right.
But she gonna spend it on nine-one-one.
That's, uses a newer edition of the budget.
So.
She keeps that reserve of the equipment. If, if that system went completely down, she has to have enough in there to replace that system.
All right, so in this work session out here, y'all ready to?
What, you're gonna, gonna go over this note page?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, go over the note page first.
Here we go.
Are y'all gonna be able to find places they believe I didn't, or not? We, uh, police officer about zero funds, that's period, didn't fail, is that, everybody good with that?
Yeah, we've spent about twelve thousand dollars this year on the period. I mean, I'm gonna see, you know, I'll be with Mr. Costas.
What's a real organization chart for engineer?
They are working on that. It'd have to be approved, though, wouldn't it?
It would have to be approved.
They're just doing something, I just told them not to approve anything, it had to come before us.
We need to take that out, and that shouldn't be making moves. On a reduction of travel internally, you gonna leave that in effect, or?
Well, we need, we got these people, so the G-classes, these people up here, they got, like, make sure we got it in there for them to take it out. Lisa.
Yeah, um, Emily Williams, and I was thinking of it, she and I are going to a remedy, I need some remedy class in October. I want her to attend that, something like that, was.
Oh, yeah.
There's also a class in October that goes with the, um, the regulations. It is at the same time as our, I guess we just have to bring. Yeah, I know, I know it's in October, but it's not a day, because it is, is doing, basically keep us out of jail.
We don't rest. When you go to the. Now, we'll pass the budget, so it's fixed. We mustn't pass the budget. I mean, I'm gonna, kind of, agree with you, it's not.
Does she notice the changes?
Right.
But we need to put in pass some of those, so.
I need one with, I'm thinking.
Huh?
We need one with that. When that producer can, I think he can't do it next week, he is, he's wanting to make sure that.
So we'll need to buy that.
The only thing I say, we can take out this for a resource officers, if they, we vote to do that, it's about.
The SRO, and then the change of the organizational chart for.
Well, but that's kind of realistic, what, I mean, if it's kind of dealing with budget, hopefully, like, come back, obviously, you can talk about it.
Right.
People have to go back to management, and they did, what's, what's on the.
Come back.
On this, I would be.
Oh. You can ask, yeah, talk about it, talk about that. Your question, the rest of about that.
I'm over the sheriff, he's on board, being him went over, but it's really, you know, gun is really on top of it, so, uh. What I suggested was to, uh, Jason was to tell me what day next week, hopefully, Monday, Tuesday, we see that he's in town, doing court here in town. I'm only including Lisa in our meeting, and we're gonna come right here, or we'll have her come down to the Ryan's office, and we'll meet down there, and just, and, and talk whatever we need to talk, uh, I'd rather come here where Lisa's at than.
But that's what we're talking about, is just pulling this back out until y'all get something kind of organized.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the two hundred and nine thousand, we'll get the bulletproof vest, the cars, the blah, blah, blahs, too, so this here's also money for three new vehicles?
Yeah, maybe this one take care of that.
That's what you need to, yeah, no, no, we were just taking it out to y'all maybe, and kind of come to a better understanding of that.
Also, what we're gonna be talking about is the contract, and then we'll all have to come in here, and sooner or later, we're gonna have to say, this is what we're gonna do.
Ryan, was that?
What you're talking about?
Was that your question?
Well, that's part of what I'm talking about, but I'm trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve here, and what I would like to do, I would like for the commission to draft a resolution or something. Allow our HR person to work with someone in the sheriff's department, develop a job description for the SRO. And I already talked to John about the, the SRO portion is, is our major, it's, it's gonna draw our attention, so, you know, what they do when they're not at school, that's up to John. Well, up to the sheriff. Bottom line is, we need the job description for the SRO, knowing their duties, daily duties at the schools. And then other duties that signs, y'all can put in there whatever you want to, you know?
Well, what, exactly, you're part of y'all's meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll discuss that.
The y'all coming together to me, y'all got to get all of that worked out before you actually run it back to the commission, instead of it being a backwards and forth situation, we've been dealing with this for a while, and it's just a backwards and forth thing. We need, like, if, like, say, anyone's supposed to meet with John and their attorney, all that needs to be worked out and bring it to us.
What we're, what we're working out is the contract on that.
But part of that contract needs to be understanding that you want a job description.
They've already put job descriptions out, and they've already got people signed up, so there's a job description somewhere, or they kind of put the jobs out.
I asked Emily Brown if they had asked for a job description for the school resource officer, and she said they have not, that she.
What kind of job do they put out? Cause John said right back there, and said, you already had two people that apply.
I mentioned.
Let me tell you what the job description is, a deputy. Yes, that's what the job description is, it's not, it's not.
And my understanding, he, he, he said in here that they had to be certified, so that would be, that would be his regular job description.
My point being, if, if we agree to hire, we don't want a job description, so that's another delay, I'm afraid.
Yeah, you feel that way?
I feel like there is a job.
There are here, it's not.
But you feel like there needs to be more detail to it?
Right.
Okay.
He's, well, you want me something that describes what his duty is expected when he's in that scope.
That's what I was talking about.
But that's gonna have to be.
Is that gonna be part of your meeting?
Is that gonna have to be as attorney, if we can do that off to John, it has to make that decision.
She said I didn't ask her for anything, she said that it was certified, maybe your position.
Okay, that makes me, before we can hire, you know? Second thing is, I would like for the commission to draft the resolution to dedicate that, it's gonna take money to supporting those, that's all.
She said that's all, when you're involved, you're gonna pick one or.
Their positions, their standards, their equipment, their vehicles.
Certified.
Hold it.
All right, sheriff don't hire people, he don't hire people, the sheriff just okay's his department is. I mean, if they want to start this crap, then we just can cut their base to Z.
What I'm saying is, the sheriff in the past, the sheriff's always hired, now, I don't know, it, it's, has always the sheriff put out applications for his deputies? And it's never really gone through HR, because he hires his own people?
You know, he has complete say-so, and he can hire and fire without any reason at all.
That's what I'm saying.
But, but, but I think he's always kind of used this as a tool to help him.
Well, but, 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 once, 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 usually, once he puts it out, whatever the price is, it's, it's, it's put forth by the commission. So if we're paying ten dollars an hour, that's all he can put out, he can't put out, but he has a job for twenty dollars out, and then he can't make it that it's nine dollars an hour, he's gonna have to get on what, the job description?
Yeah, there's always been, there's always been, uh, an understanding, and they've worked with HR until maybe recently, if, if something's happened.
Yeah.
But now, going back to what Mr. Hill was saying, he's got, he's got two resolutions, he wants to make sure, first of all, that when y'all talk this out.
We have a job description for.
Detailed, there's a detailed job description for these.
While they're at the, at the school.
Right.
And when they walk out of school, they're on what he says, right, but at the end of the day, it's still what he said, I'm telling you.
Now, now, he's got another resolution that he wants to add, and this may have to go on the next, next meeting, cause he's wanting to use SS, or SU.
Two.
S S two, yeah, S S U two.
Has to be tied into that.
Yeah.
Now, y'all all, I mean, feeling that way?
Um, we told, we told, that's what we told Jason the other night.
That we're gonna tie that money into it.
He needs to write a resolution, or to tie the issue to him, it's too late.
A big timeout, that's what my, and that's what I figure is, the legislature's gonna go in and change it, you can't overruge or let it.
Yeah, that's exactly right, but you can still write it up, that's what Jason, you know, cause I asked him the other night, in that, but, at any time, if the legislation changes, then that takes our obligation away. Cause if they're gonna take, they're gonna move that money over there.
But wait, and that was you, Jason, but was it, but it's, I didn't, I don't understand that, I didn't, I missed that.
We're all talking about it.
And I think so, I think we were all talking about it.
Yeah, what we're talking about is, whatever money we put in there, we wanted to make sure in the contract it says, well, that's the money, that the source of the funds that we're gonna use. This sudden legislator comes in and says, you know what, we're taking all the money, well, guess what, this, as far as Cleveland County's concerned, I, I'm just picking for myself. As far as Cleveland County's concerned, they can figure out how to fund their deputies after that day. Because the money, the money will not be coming to us anymore.
So we're all on the same pace?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, you good with that?
That needs to be put in the contract.
It was.
Okay.
It needs, it needs to be in their agreement, if I'm uninvolved, you know, that we, we'll use. It needs, it needs to be in the agreement, if I'm uninvolved, you know, that we, we'll use that money to support this SRO effort. And if the money drives up, then...
Yeah, if we don't have the money to fund three deputies, I'm gonna...
All right, so, now, but...
And do away with that.
Knowing this, knowing this, now, he's, he's doing, he's volunteering, doing a lot of negotiation anyway. But if something comes back, then you're not content with it, then...
Well, if he's only gonna bring it back, if he's gonna, all, all we're doing is, is going to sit down and meet with the sheriff, me, Lisa, and the attorney and the sheriff, the two sheriffs, we're gonna sit down and discuss it and then we're gonna bring it back and everybody gonna lay it out and then we're gonna look at it. That's where he's not only gonna go before the school board and be trying to...
You gonna have a general idea. There may be small, minute changes, okay?
But between the sheriff and our county attorney, this group right here will make the decision, don't introduce it before everybody else, how they, or in you, how everybody else feels, not with how we will be doing.
The, yeah, okay, but you're comfortable with that, right? Okay.
We're just, there's going backwards and forwards, we're just gonna get it and then months and months and months and we'll just...
I see, I see, I, I understand now what you're saying. When, I was just afraid if we, you put something in there in legislature check, it's gonna trump whatever. But y'all are saying, if they did trump us and they took all the money away, then we're out. You want that in the contract.
Right, oh, they will just understand and they will know that.
Just leave, put a paragraph in it that said S S U T money goes away, the contract's null and void.
Yes, right, just...
Thirty days anyway, thirty days, just thirty days forward anyway.
Here's another thing. Why don't we put a percentage of S S U T money in this state instead of saying S S U T money? Say twenty percent or twenty-five percent of S S U T money will go through that.
I'll try to, I'll try to, I'll act a little, you know?
Well, I'm talking about twenty-five percent of what we get.
Yes, that's what somebody, your people used, is that's what you use and about twenty-five percent, yeah.
But it's, but they've got the two hundred nine thousand or the seventy-seven thousand or whatever. We need to just say percentage wise, there you go, don't ever come back.
That would never happen, but it sounds good, I think.
Well...
Well, I mean, the first contract, they don't have to sign it.
We know it's gonna cost over two hundred thousand first year, you know?
I'm not voting about vehicles now. I know we can't vote today. Cause you can't get them start with and...
Let me throw something out there. I want to see these positions filled. Why don't we work toward filling the positions and then we can work out the details on the vehicle? You know, that would put the people in place sooner.
Well, we've got two more deputy cars that are down right now. One, the motor's gone out of, and the transmission's, I guess they're getting one back right now.
I think you've always got one, it's transmission down.
That's the thing, I mean, uh, usually we go over, we see cars running with the tops caved in, the front end off. It's hard to go over to see them cars look, they should be running, and they're just not running. But I don't know if we need to get rid of legislature and see what's...
Yeah, they need to change vehicles.
But he's saying, I talked to, if you've got a Honda or Toyota or something like that, but, uh, which I understand are not, but they said the Dodges are worse.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't get a Dodge if it's my wife's vehicle.
So I was, I was thinking that, and they're saying that as far as a pursuit vehicle, heck, I, for a darn turn, after eighty miles an hour, park, just give up, but we don't have the money to furnish that chase. I'm saying, that's too bad.
How does that move?
Uh, I, I, you know, we're talking, this is buzzing, so, but I understand where we're at as far as... You're gonna be with them, you don't have time to say it yet?
No, because, uh, we're just waiting on Justin to call us and tell us what day next week he's gonna be here.
Okay.
I swear to God, he would give us, but I'll, I'll text him again today.
Okay.
But he was in some kind of deposition yesterday and he couldn't talk, so...
But you feel like you got your question next year, and what you need, I'm changing, is shoot for three or two?
What, the SROs?
Yeah.
Three, that's what they're asking for.
Well, we didn't, I don't see what they're asking for.
No, I've talked to the school administrator and they're receptive and they, they want positions filled. And, uh, everybody's on board with it, you know?
And they're not saying like it would feel okay if we didn't put one at the trade school?
Well, they're expecting us to put one at the trade school. However, Mr. Glover said he would be happy if he only had a vehicle.
But not there.
That he can move around to different locations, but, uh...
But I think, I think the superintendent, what he's saying is he's giving you for three. He's giving his third, his three for three. So now, y'all, you going into that meeting, wondering...
Right now, we're going in and we'll put together what we're gonna do and then I think what we're gonna have to do is have him come and set and let's just open up and if he's hell bent and we put one out there, then, you know, but I, I, I think, I think a lot of people are saying, they're all on board, a hundred percent, I would say, people I've talked to as far as the South End, the North End of the county, but you know where the trade school's at. If he, you know, he might say, you know, that's a good idea just to put a car out there because if you ride back there, you see a deputy's car sitting in front of the trade school and you're up to no good, most of the time that blue lights on top of the car sends you on down the road.
I feel it's moving behind the building, wherever I can see it every night and put it in a different place the next day, that'd be... Couple, one person can cover that trade school, but too many roll of rubber, and in the summertime, at least thirty roll of rubber standing straight up.
Well, you know, the thing of this here and that, and they're, they're covering preschools.
But I still, I still think there's a discrepancy among you guys about whether you can go three or two. Mr. Hill's, he shoots for three.
Yeah.
And I think superintendent, he's giving us money, I mean, he's for three. But now, and, and I'm not asking you to vote, but I mean, yeah.
I think we were something to talk to them about.
Well, two, there's... In my district, so you...
I, I just concern, cause you know, it is open enough.
Mr. Hill, you saying, you got any...
I was just saying that two of the schools are in district four. And I want positions, you know, you might not get them, but I want them.
All right.
We're gonna work on that.
And I guess my biggest concern is because you're dealing with other kids and a lot of issues happen. And I know back years ago, there was an incident and some people came from another school there, so...
What are you doing that for?
I know, I got money.
All right, so work session here, this, this really not a work session, I mean, we didn't continue to talk about the budget. Are y'all, are y'all content with what we're gonna? Are you ready to adjourn it? You no longer needed to continue this. We know, Lisa, you know where you're gonna be, yeah?
Always comes the changes in there, I'm due.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to, to adjourn this course.
Might, might as well adjourn this course.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Then our next continue is the budget. We, we're not ready to pass the budget right now, but you voted to continue this meeting till today. Then you want to continue this budget, passing the budget, I call that being the order. Where you wanna, where do you wanna go to? What day you wanna pass it? What time, Lisa, do you, will you have it finished because there's...
Run out, huh?
Biggest thing is the, the sheriff's car, right? Is that the biggest change?
Yes, that's it.
So, just maybe on Tuesday, you have everything ready by then?
I'll have everything I can done by then. I just don't know what to, how to handle the SRO thing.
Well, we're not, we're not good done yet.
That's something that we'll just have to add to the budget and amend the...
That's fine. I can add everything else ready.
But you just, to be able to pass the budget, we, you know, we'll just have to come back and amend it, but to pass the budget, Monday or Tuesday?
Either one.
You guys?
I have, uh, I got several hearings, Monday and Tuesday, all before lunch.
No, but it's Wednesday?
It all has to be after lunch through the whole week.
It doesn't matter, maybe anybody you want to do it.
Maybe Tuesday or whatever that is for me, if it can be.
Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
I shoot for Monday, that's not bad.
Good for me.
You can do it Monday?
Monday after lunch.
Y'all say one?
One o'clock.
I know, I know, I hear you.
That's okay.
You're comfortable with, and you're, and you're comfortable with your colleagues here?
Yeah, I mean, it's very big a corner, you just don't give it to them. I'm comfortable with the budget, I'm comfortable with it.
So, I entertain a motion to continue this meeting until Monday, the nineteenth, at one o'clock. Mr. Hill, you got the motion, you saying aye?
Aye.